Good evening and welcome. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I call this meeting to order at 7:30, which was intended to start at 7:00. Thank you for your patience and sticking with us. I apologize for the technical difficulties. Through the pandemic, the town has gone through heroic efforts, matched by those from the Needham Channel, to try and make available all of our meetings to the public and to be able to record it. And through multiple forms of technology, once in a while, we have a glitch. We had a glitch, and thanks to Mark's efforts from the Needham Channel, I think we have solved that glitch. So thank you very much in the booth. And thank you all for your patience and to those in the room for staying with us. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. If there are people joining us from home or in the room, I may actually take comments from the room or from Zoom tonight. For the record, I will now confirm attendance of Planning Board members. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Paul Alpert.
Present.
Artie Crocker.
Yes, present.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
Natasha Espada.
Present.
Excellent. And Town Planning staff, Lee Newman.
Present.
And Alex Kleed.
Present.
Thank you very much. For others participating in this meeting, please be aware that others may be able to see you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov. Again, that's needhamma.gov unless otherwise noted. The first item on our agenda tonight is a discussion regarding long-range planning goals, initiatives, and priorities. And then we'll have a report from our Planning Director, any Board members, and in addition, if there's any correspondence. I want to make a comment, a couple of comments. First, the Planning Board, as many of you know, if you've been following us, has for a very long time been inundated with applications that we get for various types of special permits and other subdivision, the creation of subdivision and the release of subdivision lots and so forth, and all these other administrative and permitting-type activities that often plague the Board's ability to be able to get into the work of actually planning. Now, that's not to say that the Planning Board has not undergone any planning initiatives. The Planning Board is now currently underway and as a proponent for our October Town Meeting to present a change of the zoning bylaw that would allow microbreweries and brew pubs in town. We made some other modifications to our Town Zoning Bylaw fairly recently as well, changing one of the industrial districts to Highway Commercial 1, and also changing, adding the Avery Square Overlay District in that part of town. So it's not to say the Planning Board has done nothing. And of course, before that, passing the ADU bylaw in its current form that stands in the book. So it's not to say the Planning Board has been doing nothing in planning, but what I would like to see us do is compile a list, which I have done already, and it's in front of my colleagues now. Artie, I emailed it to you, and Natasha, you may have it by email as well. I printed out another one for you, Natasha, thinking you might actually come here. But what's that? Oh, wonderful. And Alex is going to screen share. We'll come to this in a moment. Yet, the point that I'm trying to make for now is that it's great that we're able to turn our attention. I would like to see us on at least every three-week basis, no matter what else is on our agenda, to proceed with these meetings that are just focused on nothing more than planning items. Because I think it's important for the town that we're able to take some swift action on a number of items that are becoming priorities. And we can't do it unless, we can't seem to do it, be responsive and to be proactive when we're plagued with so many applications in front of us for permitting actions. So I also want to make a special mention to Natasha and to Jean for the Housing Plan Working Group, which I think you've been working for about a year. Is that right?
That's right, since last October.
So working for last October and have produced a work product that is extraordinary and I think is giving us a huge leg up in our ability to think through particularly housing initiatives that I think the town, we heard when we were dealing with the rezoning for what's now Highland Commercial 1, and Paul, you were Chair, you were responsible and said that we wanted to ensure that the town set upon a path to study affordable housing. And that's really given us an opportunity to get to this point. And coincidentally, it's happening at the same time as the state has prepared some guidelines and some revisions to ensure affordable housing. Because of course, affordable housing doesn't just affect Needham, it affects the whole of the state. It's a regional problem, it's not just for Massachusetts. And anything that we can do to do our part, I think is something that the town residents are looking for. And we've heard that in some of the applications, in response to some of the applications that we've been dealing with. So what I, just to turn your attention now to this document that we've screened, that we're sharing, and Natasha, Lee, and Artie, if you're able to take a look at this document that I've shared with you, this is just a list of items that I've put together as an initial basis. I have a total of five categories, but this list will expand. I'll give us a minute as we proceed through some technical challenges to get this document loaded up. So we'll appreciate your patience while we toggle through these technical challenges, but...
Is this the reform?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I have it up.
Right there. There it is, Alex.
Yeah, I have it up.
Yeah, so you can just...
We have it.
Well, for the public.
I have it up, I can see it.
All right, that's good. But we also want the members of the public, so we're going to share it. Artie, you must have gone swimming in those seas. I know you're back now.
I actually have gone swimming in those seas. I went to Mexico, but I wish I could now.
We're having, I'm having trouble hearing Artie and Lee and Natasha, so I don't know whether they'll...
Can you let Mark know that we're having...
Just turn up the volume, basically, right?
Yeah, I think so. Just bear with us, folks, for a minute, please.
Thank you.
Artie, can you say test 1-2, please?
Test 1-2.
Much better, thank you.
You can hear us, thank you very much. So in front of us now is a list that I've come up with. It's a start, it's not perfect. It will change significantly, I'm sure, between now and our next meeting. But I've identified five categories where I see opportunities for reform. One is structural reform to the operation of our bylaw. Some examples of opportunities, we may want to modify our special permit procedure. For instance, we, you know, the question of, we had an application for a daycare recently, and that has raised some questions on perhaps some limits in our bylaw, and are there some ways to change? I'm not talking about the Dover Amendment. I'm talking about restructuring our bylaw that can clarify a procedure that may make those applications a little more smooth. There may be some other permitting requirements that we may want to look at. I understand that we have an insignificant modification plan. I think you adopted and we adopted in 2019. I don't know if there's anything that we need to enact in the zoning bylaw, but that was a question. There may be other structural reform items. A second category is housing reform. And some immediate items I see before us, stemming from the work that Jean and Natasha, you have spent so much time on, are the ensuring conformance with the DCDH guidelines. I know that you're going to want to talk about ADUs, and we'll have that discussion perhaps tonight. Also, expanding the Apartment 1 district and allowing that in other parts of the town, perhaps general residents as well along the transportation spine. In particular, we've talked about allowing housing, increased housing before along Chestnut Street. I know there have been some overlay districts. And yet, the question, I think, Lee, you had sent in an email to us about whether we want to ensure that require mixed use in certain districts, and that might make housing a little more easier. So those are some examples of housing reform items. There will be others, this is an imperfect list. Environmental reform, a number of people, you know, have asked for, for instance, a tree bylaw. I know that the town had undergone...
The audio is off.
Okay, just bear with us. Is that a little better now?
The audio is off.
The audio is gone completely?
It's back now, it's getting buzzy again.
Now you're back.
You can hear me fine? Testing 1-2?
Yeah. It was better than it was, but it's okay.
So I'm going to sing a little song and tell me if you can hear me consistently well. Can you hear me consistently well? Very good, thank you.
It's okay, right now.
So the town had discussed previously a tree bylaw. I'd like to see us revisit that. And I'm looking for resolution on a number of these items. Some will be able to move forward with, some may, you know, invoke a debate, and some we may not move forward with. But I want to see us take some resolutions, make some resolutions on these items. I'd like to see us proceed with a process for reforming our zoning bylaw to enhance greenhouse gas reduction technologies and to ensure that we can make it as easy as possible for both commercial and residential construction. That includes adding definitions to certain technical items. It will include modifying our dimensional requirements so that whether we have facilities on the top of roofs or we have facilities on the side of homes, that although those mechanical items may be within a setback, that, you know, we don't want that to interfere with the setback requirement so that we can allow for these technologies and the equipment. So we may have to discuss setbacks and heights and so forth. Also, the discussion of these items, whether they're by right or by special permit. And we also will want to discuss the impacts of these and other items. I'd like to see us devise a climate action plan. I know that we have, or the MAPC rather, has prepared, I think in November of last yearly, if I'm not mistaken, the Climate Smart Zoning and Permitting Guide. And I'd like to see us work through that to identify a number of opportunities that we can adopt and implement in Needham. I think there may also be a grant available from the state-level government, from the Commonwealth, for a consultant to help improve our zoning and make some additional specific recommendations. And if we can look into that, I think that's something that would be helpful. There may be some additional, as the fourth item, district reform. Currently, which I sit on, as you know, the Council of Economic Advisers and the Council of Economic Advisers is looking at the Center Business District and the Chestnut Street Business District. And if there are any recommendations, you know, that Board reports into the Select Board. And yet, as the Planning Board representative, I obviously would share those, and the CEA would not get involved in any, in the adoption or preparation of any zoning. But that would rest solely under the Planning Board. Yet, if there are some opportunities, that might make sense. Mixed Use 128 and the Highland Commercial 128 is a priority for me personally. I see a huge, the biggest opportunity in the town for substantial change in that area from Highland Avenue all along the Charles River up to Central Avenue. So Reservoir Street and all the way down near where Staples is. You can imagine a beautiful development, which is, and that's a large area of land, and having a boardwalk all along the Charles River would be a community that would contain elements of office space. It would be a true mixed-use development, ideally with large-scale residential, outdoor space, parks, maybe a bandstand, and there'd be office and retail. And I think that would be a phenomenal opportunity for the town. And then I have also identified what I've called as procedural reform. And one of the items, Natasha, we've talked a little bit about this before. And I think the Chair of the Select Board raised a question when we were dealing with, I think, the applicant for 100 West Street. At a hearing, I think she raised a question about, or maybe that was for 557 Highland Avenue.
It was 557.
I think you're right, it was 557 Highland Avenue. When she raised a question about equity and inclusion and diversity in their business and in their development. So, and Natasha, I think you've been working on a number of these items. Jean, who obviously have been too, and Paul, you have for years as well. I'd like to see us starting to collect some information that might be able to, over a short period of time, help inform any kind of policy change that we can be more diverse and inclusive in, you know, in our town in the development of these types of projects. So this was just a little thing that I wrote up. And yet, this is, first of all, an opportunity to hear from, you know, other members of the Board about what items they'd like to see as priorities and take some action on. And so I'd like to go around the room and start with that. So Jean is Vice Chair, I'll turn to you first.
Well, I can certainly speak of the recommendations of the draft housing plan that were presented kind of in summary form at the Select Board meeting on Tuesday. But I think I'll put that aside for a moment and just mention a couple of other items that have been perking along for years without action. One is our current regulations with regard to three-car garages. And the zoning, I did a study a few years ago on that. It was in 2018 on zoning for the third garage, and these are for residences. And I took photos of three-car garages around town, made some recommendations. And then recently, nothing really came of it. But recently, more recently, I should say, the Chair of our Zoning Board of Appeals
I saw that.
Said, well, what are we doing about this? In February of this year. I want to renumber my request, that's John Schneider, that the Planning Board proposed an amendment that will allow a third garage without a special permit. And he says in single residence B. And he has some suggestions for the circumstances.
I believe, I believe they're already allowed in single residence A.
Oh, okay. Because I was wondering why he's focusing on single residence B. Okay, then that's certainly a good reason.
But do you need a special permit for a fourth garage? In single residence A?
I see, yes. So I certainly have some ideas. I don't want to go into any ideas right now. All I want to say is that we really should respond to this and come up with some...
Specifically to that, I think that's great. Lee, can you let the Chair of the ZBA know that we formally have added it to our list of reform agenda items? And we'll take this up. And then we also, you know, I don't know if we could bring him in and have a conversation with him about it that might be appropriate. Or if he wants to send us an email to you, it might be sufficient if he prefers that. But should also speak to SRA, we should resolve the requirements for SRA. And I think you're probably joking about a fourth garage for SRA.
Well, I say that because, as I recall, there was a, there was recently in front of us as part of the ZBA agenda item a few meetings back, a fourth garage request asking for a permit in a house that is in single residence A. And that's where I had an opportunity to look at it and discover that, oh gee, yes, a three-car garage can be built as of right in single residence A, and you need a permit to add a fourth.
So Lee, can you look into see how many, a couple of things, I guess? One, for the ZBA, how many applications they've had over the course of the last two or three years for a fourth car garage in SRA? And also, I don't know if the Building Department has any records of new construction. How many new construction in SRA includes a fourth? I guess if they...
Well, actually, at the time of this first hearing in front of the Planning Board, we did get, or Daphne Collins, whose staff, that Board did a nice memo and a spreadsheet which gave the Board information on all the cars, special permits that had gone in front of the ZBA, whether it was in single residence B or single residence A to allow for these additional garages. And so I think we can just update that spreadsheet, which will give you a historical perspective over the last few years about the number of permits, the location of the other permits, and the specific characteristics of the permits.
Could also recirculate Jean's memo from 2018?
Yeah, it's October 17, 2018, and I have a full copy of it here, but...
Right, I think that'll be very helpful for the next time. We can talk about that. Because I was a little concerned when I saw the emails from February. And it was clear, of course, in February that we couldn't, we couldn't work on it fast enough for the annual Town Meeting in May. But here it is, October. And, you know, we're approaching the special Town Meeting, and we haven't, we hadn't discussed this with the view towards possibly presenting it to special. So now we're looking at next May at the earliest.
Yes.
And I think to be fair to the Zoning Board of Appeals, I think we should be
I agree.
Be working on this with an eye toward the May Town Meeting.
I would like to see us...
And I have, I have Daphne's report as well that Lee mentioned.
Yeah, but that should be updated.
Yes, this is 2018.
Right.
And the data is from fiscal year 2016 to 2018. And at that, during that time period, there were 16 applications. So they were all reviewed and...
That's really helpful. So what I'd like, what I'd like to see us do specifically, for instance, on this, is I'd like to see us come up in short order with a number of items that we can make ready for the May Town Meeting. Ideally, the main meeting as opposed to this, the special Town Meeting, but whatever is necessary. And make sure that, Lee, we're, you know, we develop a work-back document so we know what we need to have done, by when, to be compliant with the noticing and so on for, you know, to be compliant for the warrant and so on. So it sounds like this is low-hanging fruit. We have a report, it might take maybe a month to collect a little more information. Does that sound about right to update the report? Lee?
Yes, I could ask Daphne to update it. I don't think there aren't a huge number of these permits that the ZBA has received, so I don't think it will be that difficult.
And then we could probably organize that for swift action. And I'm going to hand the conch back to you, Jean, because you were talking before.
Yes.
Thank you.
I also want to talk about our timing on addressing the accessory dwelling units. Although this is a recommendation of the Housing Plan Working Group that our accessory dwelling units be reformed, to be liberalized. It's not, it's not, it's not something we must do, you know, under the new state law. However, I did note that, you know, this economic development bill that the state has not yet addressed, it is put on the back burner. And the legislature, according to our state senator, she says, Rebecca Rouse, she says that is going to be the first priority of the legislature to address the pending economic development bill. It has a provision that would require every city in town to have accessory dwelling units. And I haven't read the statute, not the statute, the provision of the Economic Development Act to see what it says. But I will do so and compare it with what is proposed. And essentially, what's proposed is that, you know, our accessory dwelling unit bylaw now will only allow an accessory unit to be occupied by a close relative of the owner of the house or a caretaker for the owner of the house. And it's proposed that people be allowed to create an accessory dwelling unit and rent it to anyone. Now, the state building code requires two means of exit. So one exit, the way we have it, is into the main house. So people are going to be very careful who they rent to naturally. And we wouldn't allow short-term rentals at all. Our current bylaw is six months is the minimum amount of, is the minimum rental. And we certainly would stick with that. We have 850 square feet limit on the size and one-bedroom limit also, and would stick with that. But the big change and also would be, if the ADU is to be in the house, and it could be in addition to the house because people can add on to their single-family houses, you know, within the setback set, there's no rule against it. If it's, but if it's within the house, it would not require a special permit. But we would go farther and say, if you have an existing barn or garage that you wish to transform into an accessory dwelling unit, that would require a special permit to have such a use in an accessory dwelling.
So we can put a pin in the detail, we can take it out in a couple of minutes. But I just want to hear what else is on your list.
Yeah, of course. So I think the last time we mentioned this, it was thought that we hadn't had enough experience with the accessory dwelling units. We have, I think by this time, we have had enough experience.
We'll talk in the beta.
And it's time to address it, yeah. So, and the question is, when? Is it something that we could do for the 2022 Annual Town Meeting, as you said, with the three-car garages? As compared with all of the other things? Under the MHTA Communities Law, that is, an amendment to Chapter 48 of the State Zoning Act, Section 3A, and the guidelines that DA CD put out, we have to do the zoning amendments to meet those guidelines by the end of calendar, I think it's calendar year 2024. So that, that's the timeframe we have to work on. But we have to report to DA CD by the end of this coming January, what it is we're going to do. And then we have, you know...
And I understand that that...
That time to do it.
That declares effectively our intention.
Yes.
And yet, we'll have a new governor by that time. And that election could vastly, significantly change, you know, how that program is for. And I think, I think candidate Maura Healy has suggested that she would continue with some modifications. And I haven't heard anything of what Mr. Deal intends to do. But having said that, I-
Can I?
Yeah.
Because this is the first that I've heard of that. Is she suggesting, and I'm going to assume that she's going to be elected from what we read in the mainstream press, is she suggesting that the DC DH guidelines that have been issued are things, is something that she wants to see some reforms to?
And- I think that, I think she supports the overall goals. But she may modify some of the requirements and some of the guidelines. But I'm not in her office, I don't know.
Right. That's a fascinating situation where she's injecting herself or her office. Because my recollection from reading the statute, which it has been a while since I've read it, and Jean has probably read it a few times since I read it. But I believe that the statute actually gives authority to the DC DH to issue the guidelines. I don't know that the governor really has the authority to step into that. And other than possibly changing the personnel on the DC DH, and I don't know whether she has the authority to do that.
And I will say also that I'm a politically active person and I pay close attention to what the candidates are being said, are saying. And I thought that she was expressing, well, you did say, expressing general support for this initiative because, you know, our metropolitan area badly needs more multifamily housing. I haven't heard her be critical of it.
She's not critical of those goals that I think many aspire to. There may be some modifications, but I don't want to get bogged down on that because that's all speculation. What's critical is that we want to, for housing, including ADU, we'll debate that as we debate some other initiatives that can also make a significant- Thanks, Artie. Okay, I'll keep singing a song here. And as I do, if you can let me know if the audio is restored. Is that a little better now? A little, not much. I see Natasha's kind of saying a little meh. Is that a little better now, testing one, two, three?
It's a little better, but it's so-so.
Still so-so now?
It's better.
Mark.
So-
Mark, Mike, yeah.
Let me just finish by saying we have a lot of work ahead of us in this regard.
Yes.
The planning board does, that's all.
And I want to make sure that we prioritize so we're, you know, we're conforming with that requirement for January. Because whatever the political debate is between now and, you know, the end of the year is one thing, that we'll have an election. But I, you know, that's the requirement today, that's what we have to deal with. And there will be a number of immediate actions that you'd like to see us take. And I want to make sure that we have a forum and a path to get there. So I think that's good. So Jean, so far you've identified, you know, that you'll have some additional recommendations from the draft housing plan, including liberalizing the ADUs. You've mentioned the three-car garage. Were there other items?
I noticed various things, I'll just mention them, that people have brought up in the form of emails, generally to Lee Newman that she shared, people wanting to see us have stronger bylaw on light pollution. Now, we do have a lighting section of our bylaw. Do we need to look at it again? Apparently, people think that we're allowing too much lighting in the developments. There was something said about, should we be having a rule that we won't allow gun stores? Now, that's a very distinct issue, but it has, is something that was brought to our attention recently. And I think it was an issue in Newton. There was, there was something in the file about, my file on long-range planning, on customary home occupations. It was like our existing rules and then a redraft of those rules. And I'm not sure if that was something that came from Deborah Baylen's time because she often was actively suggesting changes to our bylaw. But I don't know if there's something that we need to pay attention to on that customary home applications. We talked, we did discuss short-term rental ordinance bylaw, whether we need one. And we decided, when we talked about it, I don't know, a year or two ago, that we don't need it. It's not an issue in Needham, but that's another thing that people were bringing to our attention. When Deborah Baylen has two memos, one in 2017, one in 2019, recommending that we have guidelines for when we require parking and traffic studies. But I don't recall ever really focusing on that issue, you know, under what circumstances do we need to be, you know, do we need to have something written, rules and regulations or something on when we require these? And then the issue of, I think it was said even tonight that we dealt with this issue, insubstantial modifications and how we process them, revising decisions to allow diminutive changes, how we process them.
Administrative, there was a policy in 2019.
Yeah. And then Dave Roach, on January 1, 2018, had a list with about 20 recommendations for changes to our bylaw.
Oh, great. Can you pass that to me, please, Lee?
Yeah. So I don't, I don't know exactly what came of that list. So I think those were the things that I came across.
That's certainly a good start.
Yeah. I mean, recently-
We should be able to get it all done by the Maytown meeting.
I'm thinking by the end of the week.
Yeah.
Recently, we were provided with, you know, FYI in our packet, drainage regulations that were adopted by the town of Wellesley or were proposed by the town of Wellesley Planning Board. And I don't know if we have any need. And then, well, of course, you sent this, and I know probably you'll be talking about that.
Yes.
Let's see, I just, oh.
Lee, just one second, please.
Yeah.
Lee, can you please send me, what was the date of Dave's memo?
Dave's memo. It was January 1, 2018.
Lee, can you please send that to me or perhaps send it to the whole board?
Send it to the board, please.
Yes, please.
Okay, I just want to make sure I've got through everything here.
Jean, one second, please.
Yes.
Lee, I don't know if you could hear me. Lee, can you hear me? Lee, can you hear me? Lee?
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
Yes, I can hear you.
So-
I wasn't sure, I didn't hear who you were talking to, but I said, can you hear me? Did I say I was directed to me? Yes.
So I just, so can you, can you please send Dave Roach's memo from January 2018 to the board with a list of modifications?
Yes, I think that probably spoke about the customary home occupation and some of the issues that we talked about earlier.
Right.
And the only other thing that I had in my file was, of course, the tree bylaw, which is also on your list. So, thank you, that's what I had.
So that's helpful. Artie, you were interested in, you sent us an email saying that you're interested in the tree bylaw and also energy efficiency. Were there other items on your list?
Thank you, Adam. Yeah, well, I just want to, you know, just briefly go down. I guess I'll just go down the environmental part for a second. So yes, the tree bylaw, I think it's something we very much need to address, a lot of people want to address. And there are enough towns around us have enough information for us to go on. I understand there's some issues we have to deal with related to that, but we have to, we have to address it and hopefully we can get some to the Maytown meeting. Getting, then going down this, as you know, this is my forte. Not only do I want to save trees being on the Conservation Commission, but sometimes I want to take some trees down because of solar. So it's obviously kind of a polar opposite going in, but I want to save as many trees as possible. I have a lot of experience related to the solar panels, the setbacks, the energy storage, what's happening with that. If it's something we need to address to make sure issues don't come up, it certainly lets us address it so we don't have to worry about in the future. One thing I would like to be as part of that is that there are a number of times, I mean, there's a phrase, kind of a right to go solar. And sometimes it's used around the state and sometime, in that phrase, or there's been some, I believe there's been some cases going to the Supreme Court where people have a right to go solar, but what happens is, sorry, some housing authorities put some language in their articles that say, you know, you can't, you can't change the outside of the building without getting permission. And many times, many times people take that as, you can't hang a flag without getting permission, so forth and so on. But something comes up where people have been denied the right to even put solar on their roof, even though it's their roof, they're responsible for that roof, they're responsible for anything about the cost of that roof because someone says they don't like the way it looks or they think it decreases their value of the house.
Artie, I understand that you're interested in solar, I'm just trying to devise a list right now. Is there anything other than solar and trees?
Solar reform, that's part of that, that's part of it. Because I think that's something that's, I think we can easily address that. I don't think it's going to be clawback on that per se, but I think it's something we can address. So Adam, obviously you know this, we all know this, there's a climate action committee in town working on a climate action plan and that we're going to town meeting this fall and in a couple of weeks to get some meeting, to get some money for consulting to help formalize that plan. So Adam, I did this climate action plan, was that in addition to something that you were thinking of there?
Well, what I'm, I've spoken to Norm Hill and to Stephen Frail and mentioned to them some time ago that I wanted to formalize a process. I think I'd like to bring them in and they may be the expert, you know, committee in town on these items. I'd like to bring them in, I'd like to hear some testimony from them on some specific recommendations that they'd like to see us advance and organize, and I'd like to do that. So I was expecting that we would work in tandem with that newer committee.
May I ask a question on this? Do we have a formal planning board representative on the Climate Action Committee?
We are too.
Yes, Natasha.
Yes, I'm on it. And we have a zoning working group that Lee and Justin from engineering, he's engineering, right, Lee?
Yes.
Sandy, I don't know if that's his last name, and then Oscar Mertz are joining me for that working group because, so that we can do it in alignment with the, with the housing reform as well, you know, so we can look at it globally.
Great.
Yeah, I'm on it as well, because I'm kind of a carrier of the Conservation Commission. And I'm on the National Resources Working Group.
Right. So there are two of us and then we're, so I think it'll be, it'll be great to be able to look at it globally. And then seeing what, you know, we're just starting on this, so it's good that the housing, you know, the Housing Plan Working Group is ending so that we can dedicate, you know, more time to the other one. And I think, I think, I mean, there's a meeting on Monday and then we're supposed to have all the information from the working groups in January back to the group, so we have a little bit of time.
So get back, so Adam, to get back to, you know, the question myself was, I don't, I mean, I see you said add definitions. Some of the definitions is, what do we look at as far as permeable removal or impermeable removal of surface area? And also, is there something we need to look at as far as, again, increased energy efficiency as far as building codes? I know there's the stretch codes, I know the state is constantly actually upping the requirement there. And where does, so where does the town stand on that? I know that's, no doubt that's going to be coming out of the Climate Action Committee, a lot of information about that. So those are the things I care about.
I understand. Are there other items that you wanted to see changed in our bylaw?
Well, I mean, I would love this, I mean, I would love to see an increased energy efficiency and insulation regulation. I would love this, I would certainly love to see that. I don't know where, I don't, right now, I don't know exactly where, I'm sorry, I don't know, I don't know what the, I don't know where we stand right now exactly on the codes of the town versus the stretch, the increased stretch code, the stretch codes setting. But every, but every, every building that we put in, that's a lot to be put into place right now, which is not as efficient as possible, that we could actually easily do right now, in fact, is a greenhouse gas that we can never recover. So I know that there's going to be a lot of work in the Climate Action Committee related to that and they're going to have some, they're going to have, they're going to have the suggestions and we're all, Natasha and I, so we'll all be part of that. I do not have the suggestions right now, I can, I mean, but there will be suggestions coming out of that group and I like to leave it like that because my mind is, my mind is going to be focused more on the tree bylaw and something related to solar and the setbacks related to that aspect.
Right, good. So that's helpful. If, you know, there are other, so what I'm asking and had asked before, I want all members of the board to continue this list because there may be other emails that you look back on or other notes that you may find, same with you, Paul, that had been, you know, items that may have come up and been dropped. You know, I want this to be a living, breathing document. I want us to have a plan and a process where we're reviewing this and we're moving these things forward. So, you know, Artie, if there are other items that you think about when you're, you know, in a little, but do we lose Artie? No, he's there, we just lost the video, I think.
Yeah, he's turning himself off periodically for, you know, for personal reasons.
Artie, if, you know, as you think of others, you know, we're here to help get this stuff done. So now I'd like to turn to Natasha and then Paul will come to you after. So Natasha, what are your thoughts?
By the way, I'm, I'm, if I may just say, I'm glad, I'm glad you just aren't going in alphabetical order.
And I think that we should, I think in order for things to get done, I think we should, some of us know more about some categories than others, so it's kind of a divide and conquer and just understand where, you know, where we stand with all of them. I think because I'm part of the housing group and, you know, the Climate Action Plan, those seem like places where we can keep this live document going, right? Like Artie and I and whoever else is, Lee or others. I think, I guess my question, I think this is, this is great. I think my question, and I'm really interested in this whole procedural reform for diversity, equity and inclusion as well. I guess the question is, do we have a timeline for accountability for these goals? And kind of the process of how are we going to get this done? Because I think it's great, it's a lot of different pieces and a lot of work. But I think it's super necessary and understanding, I'm good at deadlines. If we have, I'm not good, I need deadlines because to be more effective, I think. Just to say, let's talk about this particular piece on this meeting. Maybe we can take, you know, one at one every meeting at the end, you know. I know that our meetings are really long, but I just think that this is timely. I think that we really need to look at the zoning bylaws closely because there are a lot of things that we're finding that are not advantageous to, you know, to the planning board, but mostly for the, for the community and things that are just outdated. And I know that it takes a lot of work to go through them, but I think we need, we need to start and-
So I want to be-
Start looking at them. I mean, one of the things that I think is really important is understanding the goals of the housing group and making sure that, that we look at the zoning related to it, especially with the MBTA communities and all of that. So I know, I know Jean knows about this more than anyone else, Jean and Oscar, but I think that's pretty critical. If we really want to make change, we have to set some of these goals, even if, even if they're long, you know.
Agreed.
They're difficult, yeah.
So that's, that's helpful and we'll talk a little bit about the process tonight after we talk through this list. Are there other specific items that have bothered you that you would- Are there other specific items that have bothered you that you would, in our zoning bylaw, that you would like to see reformed?
I think we just have to, I mean, if we're pushing for housing, I just think we have to, and there are goals for housing, there has to be clarity for developers and for this community to know what, what, what we're asking for. I think doing it project by project is not advantageous for anyone, because the developers in the community don't know, you know, what we're, what the goals are, and neither do we. And so I think that the, making it as clear as possible, and then also for environmental, right? So there's a lot of changes that are happening, the codes are changing, they're supposed to change in January, I think it's a little, so let's figure out what, how we can, you know, take advantage of, of, kind of reforming them, I guess, or making sure that we're up to date, and that, and that, that we can also, I think what's also really important is being able to communicate it to the community and making them a partner in all of this.
I, that's right, I intend on that point, I intend to invite the community, that's why I said, you know, if there are people in the audience, either at home or in person, for these kinds of meetings, you know, in an orderly way, you know, I do want to ensure that we're engaged with our communities, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
And just one more thing, I think for me, the most important thing is figuring out what are, what are low hanging fruit, what is kind of short term and what is long term, and then how do we go about researching it or giving recommendations for them, and what's the timeline, and, and, right, and how do we communicate it? But, but just having, having this as a starting point is really great.
Good, thank you very much. I'm now gonna turn to Paul.
Thank you. Going through the list, there are some things here that were maybe only one or two, that I have some specific questions on, and then on some other things I have some comments on. Question on where you have special permit procedure, do you have in mind just the major project site plan special permit procedure, or are you also talking about the procedure when somebody has, has, has a use that requires a special permit? Do you see that we need to reform those?
I, I wanna open the discussion, I also.
For both, then?
For, for both, I want to, and part of that as an example, it might include taking testimony, inviting a number of developers to come and participate, and a number of development attorneys that specialize in this area, and town council and so on.
All right, okay, thank you. So just, okay, some, some comments. On the environmental reform, the tree bylaw, I have, there was a question, I mean, the tree bylaw is something that has been in the forefront of my priority list since I joined the board seven years ago, more than seven years ago now. And when I joined the board, the planning board was planning on actually going forward and devising a tree bylaw, and the select board stepped in and said, no, 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 this is not something for the planning board to be doing on its own, and a tree, and a tree bylaw committee was formed, and I happened to be talking with the chair of the select board recently, and this issue came up, you know, and I mentioned that, you know, this has been a priority for me, and we really need to get this going, and she mentioned to me, yes, it's a priority for her too. So in my conversation, I'll try to keep conversations with her to get this tree bylaw committee reinvigorated, so that.
Necessary.
Yeah, so, so that, but, you know, there's a question as to whether a tree bylaw should be in the zoning bylaw, or should be in our general bylaws, and so that's, that's where the select board comes in. So, so I think that's something that hopefully we're, we're gonna start moving on. On the greenhouse gas reduction technologies, I'm glad that we've had this discussion, I think this is something that is, that, that may, I'm gonna use the word may specifically, may not be totally within the planning board's purview, I think that the climate action committee, this is why I asked whether, whether we have a planning board representative on that, I think this is something that at least at this point is something for the climate action committee, with the help of the planning board, with the help of the select board, should be, should be pursuing, because again, I think there's a question as, as to whether that belongs in the zoning bylaw, or belongs in the general bylaw, or a combination of, of the two. On the district reform, I know that you mentioned that, that you would like to prioritize mixed use 128 and Highland Commercial 128. I remember talking with, with Lee Newman about mixed use 128, it's a couple of years now, Lee, where, where I was looking at the mixed use 128 plan from 20 years ago, and realizing that absolutely nothing that was in that plan has ever gotten done. And I said, you know, a couple of years ago, you know, we really have to revisit this, because clearly the goals that were set 20 years ago didn't work, and, and, and this is an area that really needs to be reinvigorated. But I do wanna mention that before you joined the board, you were predecessor, well, actually you.
Liz.
You took Liz, I'm speaking more about Ted.
Yes.
Ted was prioritizing Chestnut Street, and we never really had a chance to pursue that, he was trying to push us to prioritize Chestnut Street, and I think he's right, I think Chestnut Street, just like mixed use 128, the goals that we have set in our prior bylaw changes for that area just never got, got anywhere near implemented or even started, and so I think that, that should also be prioritized. And lastly, I'm agreeing with, with Natasha in terms of deadlines, I think what we need to do is prioritize in terms of what do we want to present in May 2023, what do we want to present in October 2023, what, what should, what should we be aiming for May 2024 and October 2024? We have to be politically sensitive to the fact that there's only a limited number of zoning articles that we can bring before town meeting, or else everybody's eyes just glaze over, and it, it, it won't work. I mean, we probably have a maximum of, of three, four if we can really push it, that we can present in any one town meeting, and expect town, town meeting to be able to, to focus in on it and, and pass these things. So, so I see it in terms of looking at, again, May and October of each year for the next, several, let's go back to a five-year plan, and, you know, what do we want to prioritize for the real short term, what do we want to prioritize for the midterm, which is like 2024, 2025, 2026, and what, what are we seeing as, as long-term goals?
I'm glad you mentioned that, and Natasha, you talked, you touched on this as well, having some kind of a schedule is gonna be helpful, not just for you, Natasha, you know, for the whole of the board, and, you know, the board may, may look different, you know, in next year, when we go through another municipal election, and we'll continue to do that over the next, you know, every year we're, we're having another election. So, but I think this will be helpful, and I, one of the things I'd like to do now is just to discuss generally, Lee, this is really for you, can you hear me okay, by the way? Lee, can you hear me okay?
She's talking, but her, she's muted.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so, Lee, this is, this is for you, I'd like you to walk us through what the schedule is, working backwards from the May town meeting.
If you're looking, I think, at a town meeting in May, I, I think you're looking at having your zoning, if you're talking about actually having the regulatory component of it ready to go on a warrant, I think you're looking at having the zoning written by the beginning of the, of the year, and you're holding public hearings on that zoning in January and February, to make the annual town meeting in May. I think that's pretty much the timeline to meet the annual, there is a special within the annual, which lets you push out a hearing later into the beginning of the fiscal year, maybe into the end of February, beginning of March, but then you're putting it on the special town meeting, for town meeting. I want to say that I, you know, I see kind of two major components here that are kind of moving forward. One is the housing plan, and out of the housing plan are gonna come a series of recommendations, and actually compliance requirements under the MBTA Communities Act. And that work in and of itself is gonna require a lot of rezoning along the implementation plan, along the Highland Avenue corridor, to implement its, its goals and objectives. So that's a major piece of work, which is kind of implementing those regulations, developing the zoning that implements them, and I think probably the focus of that, we're looking at probably a town meeting in maybe in 2024, the annual, or maybe some of that work can actually go forward at the town meeting in October of 2023. And then, of course, the other piece of work is the climate action plan, which is gonna give the town an overarching plan, which is gonna involve multiple, multiple agencies that are going to be involved in terms of its implementation, of which the planning board is a component. And so the recommendations that come out of that, which have to be implemented in zoning, I think should also be targeted. And I think those are the two major initiatives that I see on the table that the town is engaged in, one is the housing, and one is kind of the response to climate action. And the other kinds of pieces that you're talking about, whether it's the low hanging fruit of the accessory bylaw, or it's the garage piece of it, I think can kind of be put in there as component articles that we address, but I think the two primary trends or focus points ought to be the housing piece, and it's, it's recommendations that are coming out of that plan in terms of implementation, and the climate action plan.
I think, I think that's helpful, I think laying out that schedule is particularly helpful for all of us, because it's October, we're mid-October now, it's, you know, we're mid-October now, we would need draft zoning, I think, by really the end of the year, you said, so we can conduct hearings into January, so by mid-January, we need to be, we need the planning board to have effectively published a draft of the guy, a draft of the zoning, and then hold the public hearing, you were saying, February, late January and February, in order to make, to make it into the May town meeting. So I don't know what, I'm prepared to talk now about some of the housing development, implementation ideas that you had, if you wanna take a couple of minutes now, it's only 8:30, I'm happy to talk through some of those priorities that you see.
Well, the, as I, as I expressed at the select board's meeting, the, the first step is one we took in, in the eighties, and that is, we have large areas zoned now, Apartment A1, that meet the guidelines perfectly. So, and I'm talking about where Rosemary Lake Apartments is, where Rosemary Ridge condominium is, where what used to be Webster Green, it's now Highlands, Hamilton Highlands, and I think it's called The Highlands with the townhouses there on Hillside Avenue near St. Joseph's Church, you know, that, those beautiful, those are perfectly zoned already, by right, 18 units per acre. Now, what other areas can we take that zoning and put, put it on it?
Excuse me, do we have to tinker with the A1 definitions? I'm thinking that, that, that there's a requirement of, of, of it being family friendly, and I put that in quotes.
The only thing, it, it, it's, it is family friendly.
Okay.
And what, and what that means is you cannot set a limit on the number of bedrooms.
Okay.
And there's no limit on the number of bedrooms in those, in the A1 zone presently.
So all we have to do in order to have a district within a half mile of the commuter rail station meet the requirements of the DC DH guidelines is to rezone them as A1?
That's right.
And, and to make it by right and not by special permit.
It's by right now. Gina's saying it's by right in the A1.
It is by right.
I apologize.
If it's rezoned as A1, it's by right.
So there's some easy places, for example, the Avery condominium, that's a renovated school on Highland Avenue, it's right across from Hamilton Highlands, you know, nearly, near the Heights Fire Station, they're all right near the Heights Fire Station, for some reason that's in a single residence zone, yet it got developed as a multifamily condominium. A1 zoning, why not? Won't hurt anybody, and it will help our compliance.
Not for that building, but for the, for the geography, the area.
For the whole lot, I mean, the lot it sits on.
In other words, if it, if it rezones as A1, then it automatically fits into the requirements of the DCA.
Guidelines.
Of the DC DH guidelines, and so we've got those units in there.
And that's, and that's not spot zoning because of the municipal benefits.
Oh, it's not spot zoning because we would zone the entire area around it.
And we're talking not on, and it's right across the street from an area that's already in that zone, so that's considered contiguous across a public way, so it's hardly spot zoning. But also, there's some recommendations for continuing that strip down, to, to go down to the Episcopal Church that's on the, no, excuse me, the, the church that's on the corner, the Methodist Church, just bring that right down and take that whole block.
That Rosemary? I mean, to take, that's the church opposite the library, you mean?
No, not right, I'm not talking about that right now, I misspoke when I said the Episcopal Church, the Methodist Church.
Methodist Church, it's up near Honeywell.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
And then on the other side of the street, you can do the same thing, bring that zone down to Honeywell Street, it's already got a 40B development of kind of a townhouse development on the corner of Honeywell and Hillside, and there's some single, single residents between Webster Green and, just bring that, make that all Apartment A1, might not mean any change at all in the use, but it could. So those are, those are the ideas for the Heights, and then some other ideas that involve rezoning is the Hillside School, zone the Hillside School Apartment A1, it's a large parcel, it'll be several years before that's, the future use of that parcel is known, but it is something that is likely not to continue to be used in the, in the long term for public school use. So there, there's, there's an example. Now, so we've got that, that, oh, and another one, of course, is the Steven Palmer, that's in a single residence zone, even though it's used for multifamily. It's been suggested that we also rezone the housing authority parcels up, up of Linden Street, because they're in the, they're in the half mile, but it's not clear now what density the housing authority will need for its future plans, so we don't wanna prematurely propose zoning that might not fit their needs, you know, Paul's got the, got the map there.
What's this?
And then when it, now, when it comes to the center, now, right, now we get to another, another idea, and that is allow multifamily standalone housing, not mixed use, because the guidelines don't count it, if, if all you allow is mixed use, it doesn't count, has to be standalone multifamily. Allow that as a use in our, in, in some of our industrial districts, the Hillside Avenue Industrial District, right across from Rosemary Ridge condominium, why not allow multifamily housing? And use the same dimensions as Apartment A1, you just, it's, it's a use.
Incorporate the Apartment A1 requirements.
Yes.
Put them into, and put them into the industrial zone.
And then Hillside, going up the hill to Hillside Avenue Business, you recall that eight, that eight-unit multifamily we approved recently, it required a special permit, it was on Honeywell Street, near the corner of Hillside, right next to the River Right Way. uh, right next to the, um, railroad right of way. Uh, and it's under construction now, I'm sure you've driven by it. Um, so it required a special permit. Um, the basic, the difference is it, we would allow the same, same thing, using, always using the apartment A1 standards to be consistent in all the zones in that Hillside Avenue Business.
Jean, I think you're referring to the house that was torn, torn, it was, I think the one, the one that was torn down, that came before us and they were, they're torn down and then built it, and that kind of seems to be built in, but.
Right, it was a small office building that was torn down and the brand new eight unit apartment.
Right, right, right.
It was kind of an, it's kind of an L-shaped lot, kind of an L-shaped lot.
Yes, yes, you're right, uh, uh, you're remembering exactly that. So, um, then, um, Crescent Street is an odd industrial, um.
We know.
Tucked away up there.
Yep.
Why not allow multifamily as a use? I'm not.
Well, that's industrial, and so if we just change the zoning for the industrial zone, that area would be included.
It would be.
You mean, we, we allow by right?
We, we allow by right all the requirements of an A1.
Yeah.
That we have for.
Yeah.
And then, um, another business, I mentioned the Hillside Avenue Business, but another business district is a large one. Um, and it is where, um, Sudbury Farms on Rosemary Street, then you go down towards the center.
Yes.
Uh, you have the Bertucci's Plaza, you have the Funeral Homes on the corner of May, that whole strip. Allow standalone multifamily housing using the same dimension.
Just to understand that a little bit.
And then there's just one more, and that's just, and the big, the biggie then becomes Chestnut Street.
So to go back to, let's say, the Bertucci Plaza that you were talking about, Sudbury Farms, that area. In an ideal world, we would have, I would love to see three or four levels. I don't know.
Audio is really bad again.
All right, thank you, we're working on that, stand by. Uh, that, the, um, that we, I don't think that we could get, have more than a four-story building. If we did, maybe the most would be five. But imagine a five-story building there, and although we don't require mixed use, if a developer wanted to keep the first floor available for retail, why? Because there could be sixty units above, and that in addition to the demand for retail that we see is already present in that area, if we've got another sixty units of housing, I'm sure it would support well first floor retail. Would there be a prohibition for the developer that would not be able to do retail on the first floor?
We, um, the, it doesn't, of course, that zone doesn't presently allow mixed use as, say Chestnut Street does, but.
But does the A1 district allow it?
Uh, no, it really doesn't. It only allows apartment building, but we're talking about mixed, we're talking about allowing all the uses that currently are allowed in that business zone and also allowing standalone multifamily housing. Because the MBTA guidelines do not let you count a district where all you're allowing is mixed use.
So what, so what I'm.
But we could, we could, of course, have mixed use as well.
Okay.
No reason why we couldn't.
So we have, uh, we, we allow for retail and we allow for housing.
And we allow for mixed use.
And we allow for mixed use.
All three.
And in, and.
All three, standalone apartments, stand, standalone retail or business.
Great, I love it.
And mixed use.
Mm-hmm. And, um, oh, I forgot one parcel, uh, where we could also rezone for, um, apartment A1, and that is the Hartney-Graemont. You recall that town meeting was on.
Been there, done that.
Well, yes, however, what was proposed is a four-story.
That's a bruise.
Was a four-story building.
No, Jean, Jean, I completely forget what you're talking about. What, what Hartney-Graemont project coming for a town meeting? I'm a woman kid, I know exactly what you're referring to.
Yeah, but that was a four-story building. In fact, the developer started by proposing a five-story building, um, and that was not acceptable to town meeting. But here we're talking about three stories. That's the max. And.
Is that the max presently in?
And that is the maximum.
Yeah, I, I.
Sorry about that. There was some, some, I heard some mention about five-story, and, and again, I, the, the audio is mixing up, but I heard some, some mention about five-story. I thought that was mentioned when we were talking about the Sudbury Farm to Bertucci's, that strip area, where we're talking.
Yeah.
I was, I was just, Artie, I was just speaking, can you hear me now, Artie?
Yes.
It's like that commercial from Verizon.
Verizon, yeah, exactly.
So, Artie, what, I was just speaking extemporaneously, not with any political passion or grand plan, but I was just making an example that if, you know, I would personally love to see, you know, at least three, probably four stories, um, uh, in that geography from, you know, Rosemary down towards where the funeral parlors are, and allow for at least a four-story, five might be too much. But, um, uh, you know, I was just throwing it out there. And, and still being able to preserve an option for a builder that while we preserve compliance with the, uh, DC DH guidelines, that there still is an opportunity in the market to, uh, you know, to support retail, uh, on the first floor. Because my, maybe it's because I've been on the CEA for, for several years now, but I see that if we increase our population, especially over effectively retail, then it will promote, um, a greater opportunity for retail. So that we don't have three or four, um, effectively consignment stores or used clothing stores. And I know that a number of people in town, you know, would prefer to have fewer banks. And yet, what's a landlord supposed to do if a landlord, you know, those are the market conditions of the day. And, um, uh, but if we had, I think that if we had greater density, I know that members in the CEA have articulated this for a long time, the greater the density, the greater the mix of retail we have.
Well, I can agree, I wasn't, I'm not, I'm certainly not objecting to having the opening for the mixed use and having, defining different ways to make sure we comply to the, uh, the requirements in the MBTA. Uh, my concern is that I can see three, I'm a little concerned about four, possibly, I'm not sure yet. My concern is I want to make sure that we stay, whatever goes on there, even though I know we have railroad tracks in between, that we do have a neighborhood on the other side of railroad tracks. So I just want to make sure that we stay with something that respects the fact that there is a neighborhood on the other side of railroad tracks.
Uh, we're not into the details yet, we'll deal, that's a good point, and we'll deal with that as we, you know, as we dive into it, which I do hope that we dive in soon, I, you know, and that's where we got to get to next.
That Housing Plan Working Group has not, um, focused on the idea of introducing mixed use in, in that business strip that I spoke of between May Street and Rosemary. Uh, but what you're essentially talking about is taking the use that is allowed in, on Chestnut Street, the mixed use, with, uh, one story of the, of the retail or restaurant and three stories above. An example of that, and we only have one, is that building on Dedham Avenue across from the Unitarian Church.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you want to think about introducing that use in, in, in the May Street to Rosemary Street strip, we can certainly consider it. But we've really focused on standalone multifamily because that's what the MBTA guidelines are looking for.
But what you're doing is you're, you're not looking to eliminate the commercial districts in town and to replace them solely with housing districts.
Not at all.
You're looking to preserve the underlying commercial districts.
Well, anything that's there would be.
Put grandfathered in, exactly, of course.
Well, no, it wouldn't even be grandfathering, it, it's allowed.
But yes, but you're looking to preserve.
To whatever extent, by right, by special permit, just the way it is.
And that's okay, and, and that's okay with the DC HD guidelines?
It is, as long as we allow standalone multifamily.
Okay.
Um, and I just want to mention our town center in Chestnut Street. Um, we'll allow, um, we're proposing to allow standalone multifamily all along Chestnut Street, both sides. However, the mixed use, it gets complicated to say that can be by right, because you've got things that do require a special permit, a restaurant, you've got, uh, different rules. So we're just leaving that alone. If it's mixed use, it's, it's still going to be the way it is now, by special permit. It's only the standalone multifamily at three stories that's by right. And there's other requirement, um, um, Select Board member Matt Varelli commented on the minimum lot size, uh, in apartment A1. It's twenty thousand square feet, and he thought that might present difficulties because, um, in, in, in our district like Chestnut Street, you have, um, smaller lots and they would have to be, you know, uh, consolidated with other lots, which is always difficult, we know that.
Well, that's the problem that we had with the Chestnut Street area to begin with, which is, which is why nothing's getting done.
Yes, so.
Pursuant to, to, to the vision that, that our zoning has.
I would, I would say that in an effort to promote greater density, just to put it out there, I would support reducing the minimum lot size for four units, six units, you know, in whatever districts that we're talking about. Um, because I, I mean, my personal, my personal opinion about, um, uh, my personal opinion about ADUs is, and I have a number of thoughts on ADUs, and I'm happy to have the conversation about ADUs now, but, uh, we can also have the conversation another time. I, I'm not as convinced that ADUs can make a significant enough, I should say, I'll rephrase this. I haven't recently, until recently, I haven't been convinced that ADUs in and of themselves, I don't know the, if we're getting, uh, six of them a year or eight of them a year, I don't even think we're getting.
We've had eight total since the bylaw went into effect.
For two years, so we're getting three, four, four.
Three years.
Almost three years, so, and, and that's also because there are significant restrictions, I understand that. Uh, I guess what I'm saying is, um, until recently, I didn't think that if we liberalize or made more permissive, I think in your own words, uh, ADUs, that, that would make any dent, significant or material dent in either the cost of housing or, uh, contributing enough, um, housing units to, you know, to really help. I thought it always must be.
Chair, if I may comment on that, um, and it's my recollection off the top of my head, and again, it's been a few years because I was looking at this when we were proposing ADUs. If you look at the towns that have had ADUs for quite a while, and you look at the statistics of how many ADUs they have had, looking at Newton, looking at Lexington, uh, in particular, some, some of the other towns, that will bear you out. They have not had a lot of ADUs come online.
So it's not, so it's not material enough, but then what I, you know, in discussions with some other more learned people than I, I've, I've understood that if we suddenly went from three or four a year to six a year or eight a year, and maybe we had eighteen a year, that's not, you know, that's still not a large number of housing units in comparison to something like a Kendrick that might be close to four hundred units. And yet, of all, if many of the communities around us and throughout Massachusetts do that, then it does contribute, it does, it does make a difference. And so I think it's important that people understand the context, and it's helpful as we communicate these things, that people understand it's not just, we make, I, it's not just to make an incremental move because we can wave the flag and say, oh, we're great, we, we made a change. It's that we're recognizing we are part of a bigger community, and as, and we do our part to be part of that community, and as a whole, we're able to advance bigger than ourselves. And I think that that's a lot of a goal. I'm not resolved on, uh, you know, on ADUs yet. I think that they do pose some challenges, like how do you handle a scenario? I see several challenges to ADUs, and if we want to jump into ADUs tonight, we can. If we want to jump into it another night, that's fine. But some of the questions that I, that I wonder about are, first of all, you know, we're, we're creating, we're creating tenancies in a landlord-tenant relationship. And, you know, you've been a municipal lawyer, you know, you do some real estate in your practice, my practice is entirely real estate. And, uh, um, you know, these landlord-tenant relationships, you know, it's one thing to have a contract and a lease, and that's a wonderful thing, but holdover tenants happen, not infrequently. And if someone's trying to sell their house as part of an estate plan and so forth, that whole thing becomes a real challenge if you've got a tenant that doesn't want to leave. And, uh, you're dealing with evictions and it poses significant problems. I'm not saying not to do it. I am asking the question, you know, what are the impacts of these, you know, of these liberalized ADUs? It's one thing if I'm your, if I'm your, your son and I, and I move into your house or I, I move into your house and you move into an apartment that we create, and I'm there to help you or as a caregiver, that's one relationship, but it's a very different relationship. If there's no blood relationship and it's not someone who's caring for the other person, if you've got Babson students coming there or B.C. students, whatever the case is, it can pose some challenges. Parking can also be a challenge if you're dealing with, you know, a nine thousand square foot lot or a four, or a seven thousand square foot lot that might not even have a garage and, uh, you know, and only has, you know, one or two parking spaces. If you've got four cars there now, how do you handle that?
Presently, we require, uh, uh, another parking space for the ADU in our bylaw, and I think we continue that requirement.
So that affects, for instance, the open space requirements, and, you know, it affects the, uh, pervious and impervious ratios and so forth. There are, there are some additional impacts, so.
Jean, Adam's point is that if you have a tenant, your tenant might be a married couple. And so the married couple, even though our requirement is that we have an additional parking space, in practicality, there may be requirement, a practical requirement of having two parking spaces for your tenants, because you've got, you know.
Paul, will you, will you try to back, just back me up with the microphone a little bit? It's almost impossible, yeah, you.
Okay.
I'm not sure why, just back off a little bit, let's see if you can see what happened.
Okay, so, 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 um, Adam, Adam was bringing up the challenge about parking spaces in having an ADU on a, on a, on a smaller house or a smaller lot. And Jean mentioned that our current bylaw requires that when you have an ADU, you have to have an additional off-street parking space. And I'm bringing up the point that even at nine hundred square feet, you could have a rental where you've got a couple moving in, and when you have a couple, you're likely to have two cars.
Not just one.
Are, not just the one that our bylaw requires, so, okay, you get your permit, you go to, to the building commissioner, and you get your permit because you show that, yes, you have the room for the one car. Um, and, and then you wind up with, with tenants who have two cars, and now you've got a car that's parked on the street all night.
Well, I, I'd like to back up a bit and talk about, oh, these people will face difficulties with tenants and so forth. Uh, you may recall that when, when we first put in the ADU bylaw, the impetus for that came from our Council on Aging and our Health Department. And they saw it as a benefit to the older folks in our town who may be struggling to pay their, um, their taxes and their, and their utilities.
And what we've seen from that, that hasn't really been true.
And the, um, and it's likely that if you allow rentals, um, the persons who would want to take advantage of that will be the older homeowners who like, want to stay in their home even though it might be a little too large for them. And we, we have a very fine senior center that provides advice, um, to seniors, and I feel certain that if, if there were a challenge of seniors having difficulties with tenants, that would be a place for them to turn to our senior center and to the counseling that occurs there.
It's quite a burden.
I expect that you're going to find our Council on Aging and our Health Department very supportive of this idea of liberalizing the ADUs. And I think when it talks, when you talk about how it's not going to meet a big, a big need for housing, I agree. I don't think there'll be that many people come along who want to do that, but for those who do it will be a great benefit. And the whole idea is to preserve the appearance of the single-family home. I want to not, I don't want to forget the, uh, something I want to mention about that. Um, that's partly, well, we have a special permit and the zoning board appears, makes sure that it's preserving the appearance of the single-family home. If you don't have a special. If you don't have a special permit and it's by right, who's going to make that determination? It goes beyond the kind of decisions that a building inspector makes. So we're proposing that the design review board, I have a role here, that the plan be reviewed by the design review board on that criteria, that the design review board report to the building commissioner so that he has something to rely on in going ahead and granting the building permit.
I, I like where that's, I like where that's going. I, I, I do, I do think that, you know, it's, I'm not entirely convinced that the town, the town giving landlord-tenant advice, you know, is an appropriate place for the town because that I think imposes a liability on the town if people are relying on the guidance.
I think, Adam, what I could see happening is that the council of aging or the people at, at the senior center would have a list of local lawyers who would be willing to, to help homeowners.
They can refer out services.
They could refer out the services or even just, you know, give a list of, you know, if, if.
Right.
If somebody comes to me and says, you know, I need a landlord-tenant lawyer.
Right.
I try to give that person at least two names, preferably three names, and say, you know, call all three and you choose, I'm, I'm not going to recommend any.
Exactly.
Any one, but here's, here's, here's a list of two or three lawyers for you to call.
That makes, I think that's, I think that's reasonable. Gene, is that what you had in mind?
Oh, of course.
Okay.
We're not expecting, we're not expecting that the senior center will engage an attorney to advise people, no.
That's what I, okay.
I'm just talking about their counseling role.
Yes.
Yes, so if I could just chime in, so, so I agree that with where Gene's going with this, you know, without, without question, the more, you know, the more ADUs or landlord-tenant things that come up, of course, there's going to be more, you know, more people where there could be an issue, it doesn't necessarily increase the probability of an issue, but of course, it could increase the amount of times there are issues, as, as I think a number of, you know, I'm, I'm a big proponent of multi-generational living, I'm a big proponent, I'm doing whatever we can to help people stay in the home as long as possible. I mean, this could very well be a 55-plus-year-old that, that is, has a house and wants to open it up to some type of rental. I don't know what this is going to look like, I, I'm not saying I'm in favor, just let's just open up the whole town, I don't know what it would look like, but I, but I did believe when this article first came up a number of years ago, I, I thought it was too restrictive, I thought it was just, it was narrowing it down too much, and so I do think this should, it should be redone, lifted a little bit, to what degree, Gene, I'm honestly not certain.
So already, let me ask you a question.
But I don't want to live in fear, I, I just don't want to live in fear that chaos is going to, you know, rule now. I also believe that if there's an issue with our open space, you know, I'm big on open space, also in permeable surface, the driveway, there could be requirement that, okay, there has to be a driveway, but it could have, you know, maybe it's going to be a gravel driveway, this permeable surface, it's not green, I would prefer to have something green, but at least it's permeable, at least it's something that, that will count as a driveway. So I don't really want to live in fear of what this will all create, I don't know, I don't know what the hell the town's going to respond to this, but I think it's, I think it's something that we can do better with, is anything that we can do to increase the possibility of multi-generational, the possibility of people living in the home alone.
Why do you think, why do you think this is going to be, why do you think this is going to be solely based on multi-generational living? What evidence do you have to suggest that that's what this goal is and that that's what we're going to achieve?
I didn't say, I didn't say, I didn't say it's only going to be multi-generational. I also said, given the possibility of people living in their house longer, to just be a 55-plus-year-old, that they're going to be able to live in the house longer, that isn't just, that isn't a relative living there. Sometimes, multi-generational could sometimes simply be that somebody's renting out their, an older person is renting out their house to a younger couple, matter of fact, my grandmother lived on a lot in Rose, she lived, got a lot, three or four houses up on a lot in Rose, she had an apartment over her garage, many times, teachers rented that apartment, we called it Pine Room, they rented that, I guess I call it an apartment, they rented that apartment, she did that for a long time, I guarantee that helped her out, the system, I mean, she, she passed away in 79 and at the A and P Stop and Shop, she lived in that house as long as I could possibly remember, and did that help her out? Yes, was it necessary? I don't know, but she did that, she didn't have, whatever issue she had, I never knew, but that helped her out, but they were not relatives, but it was multi-generational, multi-generational does not mean it had, I'm sorry, I could rephrase as multi-age, that certainly doesn't mean they have to be relatives. So I, I don't want to live in fear of what this could create, at the same time, I want to respect what, you know, what people believe the town is and how they affect the town, but I don't want to live in fear about it.
I, I don't think any of us want to live in fear, but I do want to make sure that we are thoughtful, you know, if we consider removing these restrictions, which I don't oppose, but I want to make sure that we're addressing these issues, you know, we have, you know.
Sure, absolutely.
Gene, you spoke of, you know, a scenario where we're preserving the look, you know, and the, the look and feel of a single-family home, and then we've already seen an application for an ADU, you know, as Artie's saying in relation to his grandmother, that someone wanted to, you know, expand the garage and put it up above the garage.
Well, that's clearly not allowed and I hope.
Not allowed right now.
I feel certain it wouldn't be allowed.
But we, that's what I want to make sure that we're clear, and the other, you know, challenges is if we do get, I want to hear from, and Lee, if you can facilitate this, it would be helpful, Lee, can you hear me?
Yes.
You know, I'd love, I'd love to hear from our town engineer on, you know, what the, what our, what the capacity is and from, you know, from DPW to be able to handle, you know, if we, you know, if we're adding, let's say, and I doubt we'd have more than this, I don't even know if we'd actually achieve it, let's say we had 20 a year, over the course of a five or 10-year period, what impact does that have on our sewer system, our water system? I just would like to be able to get some understanding about that, I.
I'm sure we'll have, this isn't our last opportunity to talk about this.
Yes, that's right.
Before we start drafting a bylaw, so.
Of course.
Maybe, maybe it's time to, and also to hear from the boards I mentioned before, that, you know, the council on aging, board of health, and as you say, town engineer. There's a couple of things I don't want to forget to say regarding the housing plan work, because we talked about Chestnut Street and we talked about keeping the mixed use and having that still require a special permit, but introducing multifamily standalone by right, but what about our Needham Center? What we, our recommendation is to leave that alone, right now, because, because our vision for the, for Needham Center, for, you know, that intersection of Great Plains Avenue, Highland Avenue, Chapel Street, is of a walking downtown with shops, with restaurants, so not talking about introducing standalone multifamily housing in that central business district. It's interesting that a little strip, that is the Garden Street Strip, where mostly now it's occupied by Needham Bank buildings, actually now is zoned to allow a standalone multifamily housing, I had forgotten that, but we would continue that, maybe allow the dimensions of A1, I think it's a limited, maybe 37 feet instead of 40, some, you know, making it more like two and a half story rather than three, we could talk about that, but that's the only place in the central business area because it's low now, that we continue that, but otherwise, we'll leave it alone, we have a vision for our downtown.
So, so on this point, I'm not sure that there's consensus among our town boards on how to handle that, you know, there is, I'm going to speak to that in a minute, but I, there's been, there's been, you know, discussion about the beautification, the downtown plan, Lee, and I think one of the questions that came up, if I understand correctly, from a meeting some time ago, was to what extent is it going to be pedestrian-friendly and to what extent is it going to be vehicle-friendly, and it's a real challenge, we may have spoken about this.
You and I talked about this the other night.
Yeah, where, you know, and the, the goals are diametrically opposed, because although, as Paul, you pointed out, it's, it's, Great Plains is a, is a state road and it may have certain.
Well, it's a state road, it's a state highway.
State highway, and, and has certain regulations governing it, you know, in order to support businesses in town, I think that if it was more pedestrian-friendly, it would, it would improve the condition for businesses, but if we continue to make it vehicle-friendly to get cars through, then that doesn't help our businesses, and I think that's, you know, I think we have to identify first, what's the overarching goal that the town's looking to achieve, and then, and then, you know, build out a plan from there, and go, go ahead.
I should mention, at the, at the very ends of the district and areas that are now zoned, single residence, there's, there's a couple of opportunities for rezoning, and one is of course, 888 Great Plains Avenue.
Yes.
And the church is next.
That's right.
You know, St. Joseph's Church is in the apartment A1 zone, doesn't seem to affect St. Joseph's Church at all, we can comply with the MBTA Communities Act by zoning these churches that are but our business zones, A1, and extend that zoning down, in the direction of the Baptist Church and in the direction of the Congregational Church, but the heart, all I'm saying is the recommendation now for the heart of our business district is just to leave it alone, so.
The CEA is looking at that.
Well, let me add one, one more thing, I don't, when I say leave it alone, I, I, all I'm saying is not say, not introduce standalone multifamily as a use, but both Chestnut Street and our central business district, we need to study our current rules on, on mixed use and our current rules generally, how, why is it we've only had one project in all those years?
There are a number of, so that's a great question.
And we really need to study that, we really do.
I think that's a critical question, there, there are, you know, a similar problem that we've heard in mixed use 128, elsewhere in Needham and including Chestnut Street and, and also in our downtown where there's a very small lot with fractional ownership and it's very difficult, you know, one, you know, for assemblage, it's one of the biggest problems, and that assemblage issue is a challenge in a multitude of ways. First of all, you know, you have different multiple owners that you have to try and align at the same time, and yet each individual owner has this scenario where they have, they might have a, a, a building with four, five or six units, and if they want to knock the building down, what do they do to displace those other tenants? And we can't really just have them go in, you know, you know, have the landlord find another temporary spot, especially if the landlord doesn't own another spot, and even if they do, those tenants have already invested a substantial amount of money into the improvement of those spaces, whether it's for retail or restaurant, whatever the case is, and then you have, then you also have this scenario where you might have one tenant whose lease is up next year and you've got another tenant whose lease is up in seven years and another tenant whose lease is up in five years, and maybe you don't renew as they come up, but now a landlord has a building with four, five units and is only drawing revenue on one, two or three units and still has expenses to pay, so it's really, I think, you know, I think that comes down to density and floor area ratio, that the incentive has to be significant enough that it allows, you know, the current property owners, you know, a greater incentive to, you know, to sell the land.
Exactly, we need to look at these things, definitely, yeah.
So I think that that's, another comment that I just want to make is, I think it's important that as we lay these questions out, that we also continue to remain in, in touch with the select board and the finance committee and town council and our building, our building commissioner, because I want to, and I, and I do intend to have conversations with, with those other boards and to invite them into this conversation because they have their own unique perspective. The select board looks more broadly at the whole of the town, FinCom does as well, they have their own influences and their own factors that they look at, and town council can help us, I think, in this endeavor too, as would obviously our building inspector who, our building commissioner who already had that list from a few years ago. So I think we have a good start, I think we lost Natasha, she had to attend to another Do you want to continue rolling through for another hour and a half? Do you, okay.
No.
So I know that you've been through a lot.
One thing I want to mention, there also was a change in the state law, and that was to require only a majority vote rather than a two-thirds vote.
Yes.
For rezonings that accommodate increased housing, so I think when we're talking, the rezonings we're talking about here, they would go before town meeting and only require a majority vote, and that, but that reminds me to bring up another issue, at the same time that when we, when we were seeking an opinion of our town council on the Muzzy site, where if we were simply allowing housing as a use.
Right.
In our rezoning, did that mean that we could have, only a majority vote? And the answer was no, and I thought that was the right answer. However, at the same time, Newton was getting an opinion from its city solicitor.
For yours, yeah.
For the Northland project, that it could be done by, by a majority vote of, of course, of their city council, they, it's their.
Right.
City council, it's their legislative body, what's the difference? The project, for the Northland project, because they were working hand in glove with the developer to have it be, you know, just this way, that way, the other way, was requiring housing rather than allowing it.
And is that, you're saying that's why.
That was the difference.
It only required.
Yes.
A majority vote instead of super majority vote by the legislative body.
Yeah, because it, it development, that Northland development had to have a certain amount of, a certain number of units of housing. Now, we don't require that, but the question is there, should we? I mean, if we're talking about big developments that they would like to see in mixed use 128.
Let me ask a question, I apologize for interrupting, when you're, are you saying that the, that the municipality made a requirement of the developer on that specific project or made a requirement of the underlying zoning that the underlying zoning required?
Made, with the underlying zoning, that was the question, that had to be approved by the city council.
That required.
And the city solicitor said that it could be done by a majority vote because it required a combination of housing.
The underlying zoning required it, not the application, okay.
Right, we're talking about the vote for the zoning.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's interesting that towns have council and cities have solicitors.
I know.
Yes.
I have been both.
Fine, we won't hold that against you.
All right. And you know, you remind, when you talk about the difficulty of putting together, you know, parcels together, I'm reminded of the 50s and the establishment of redevelopment authorities, and the one community I worked closely with that had a redevelopment authority and was doing a project to, to expand the parking, parking lot downtown was Newburyport, which has a redevelopment authority. I don't think Needham wants to establish a redevelopment authority, but that's what the problem was back in the 50s, when you had depressed urban areas with failing little downtowns.
Sure.
You know, in neighborhoods, get the redevelopment authority, the redevelopment authority can take that entire area by eminent domain, you know, it's, it's a strong tool, but.
Yes.
You know, the state act does allow it, but I don't think, I don't think Needham wants to go in that direction.
Are we going to turn, are we going to turn into mini Trump?
I think that politically, after the history of Robert Moses in New York City, and he has not been, and he has not been getting good press in the past 10 or 15 years.
In the West End.
In the West, exactly where I was going, in the West End of Boston, the idea of a redevelopment authority is not something that is palatable.
I know. I know, I know.
So I think.
But you're also dating yourself, Gene, when you talk about practicing law in the 50s.
I wasn't practicing law. I was, I was a teenager. Believe it or not, involved with the Teenage Organization on Urban Renewal.
There you go.
It's been part of, it's been in your blood for a few decades.
There you go. That's right.
When did you got into municipal law?
Exactly. She was interested in it as a teenager.
There we go.
So what I'd like to do now is turn this conversation to next.
Not everything that I was on my list. Oh, except, nobody mentioned the state stretch code.
I already did.
I already mentioned it.
Okay. That they're going to come up with a new stretch code very soon, I understand.
Well, they've been saying that for quite a while now, so.
So I, what I'd like to do now is turn our conversation to next steps. So we have several concurrent streams of activity here. One, your Housing Plan Working Group has to complete its report. And we want to ensure compliance with some guidelines that we intend, that demonstrate our intentions to be in compliance with that January deadline, which is really only two months away.
And I think Katie King is taking the lead on that.
So.
Assistant Town Manager.
So I, you know, I'd like to see us move forward with any, you know, priorities stemming from that to be in conjunction. That'll, I think that'll help in our process and our timing. If we're looking for zoning changes, Lee, were you saying that? What's the last date, Lee? That we would need to have a draft of any zoning coming up?
Ideally, it's the end of December. Maybe you can stretch it into the first week of January. But don't forget that once you vote, I mean, there's a whole process of, you know, finalizing the language, and it goes to the Select Board, then it comes back to you, then it's noticed for a hearing. So it really should be done at the end of the year, ideally.
Really talking about, in order to have, in my mind, in order to have a draft by the end of December, it has to be worked on.
Now.
Basically, mid-October through, through.
November.
Through mid-December.
Yeah.
You know, that's your 60-day window.
So, so that helps us. That defines some clarity on what we need to do and my.
So we have to decide what we want to bring before town meeting in May.
Yes. I think that we can do several things at once. I'm going to continue to have some conversations with others, with other town departments and town committees, for instance, to see what may be required on the tree by law.
We're not going to have a tree by law ready from May town meeting.
So I.
Because the tree, the tree by law is a multi-departmental.
I understand that.
Committee that has, that has to be reconstituted. I mean, the Planning Board representative to the tree by law committee is Liz Grimes.
Right, I understand. So, and that was several years ago. I get that. I just want to re, I want to, maybe it's something for October of 2023. I don't know. But I just want to get us onto a path. I want to make some inquiries and find out what's necessary.
Tree by law, I think should be a priority to get started on, to put it along.
And maybe we don't, maybe we don't have as many objections anymore. And there's enough components in the system that, you know, that can make ready for May. I just want to make the inquiry and see what's necessary. And then.
I certainly like to, you know, couple things. A, keep it as a, you know, let's say, I'm going to keep it as hopeful. I'll leave it for that, right? I'll put that out there. But Paul, one question I have for you, Paul, is, and then the rest of the board, where do we think it stands is who's responsible to bring this article to town meeting?
I think last time it was left, it was the Select Board was taking really the ownership and the lead on it. And I think they were looking at actually doing a general by law. So it's not really a zoning process.
Okay, because, I mean, as I think Paul or Adam, you just stated, a lot of work had been done on this before, a lot of work. And it just kind of dropped. I don't know all the reasons for it dropping. But a lot, a lot of towns around us have some experience in that. And I've certainly talked to Ed about this. And I realize that it, I wish it was, I wish it was clear cut. But I, but Ed does have thoughts, the towns around us have their experience. And so is it a possibility? Could we have something? That's a possibility. If we can't do it for May, I would at least like to have a note later than next fall. I don't, I have some reasons why I don't like articles and zoning articles coming before fall town meeting. But the fact is this, every year, we haven't had anything. Is that many more trees have gone? And people just get a little, people are a little fit of it, fit up with it.
I think, I think when, when there's a will, there's a way. And I don't want, I don't want the October bias to prevent us from doing good work. So whether it's a tree by law or housing by law or other zoning changes, it's, you know, it's all worth pursuing. And you're right, we'll, we'll keep this, we'll keep this hopeful and optimistic. So what I'm going to do is make notes on your, on that summary that you had prepared. What I'd like all of us to do is to look at that list that the Housing Group, the Housing Plan Working Group has devised. And then we can start to, we're going to have to meet more frequently than on a three-week basis because if we're looking to get some changes done for May, you know, we're going to have to take action on these items now.
I think, I think we're really targeting for the rezonings that I was talking about for multifamily housing, the annual town meeting of 2023, not 2022.
Right. But I think we can do the accessory apartment one in 2022.
We're in October of 2022.
Excuse me, I miss, I keep misspeaking about the year. I mean, annual town meeting of 2024. Exactly. Yes, thank you, Paul.
I'm not, that's for some things, but it seemed to me, based on your presentation the other night, that it's just a function of modifying in a very simple way.
It's not so simple, Adam. The devil's always in the details. It's going to take, it's still going to take a lot of work to be able to figure this out, to have the zoning by law that we want to have, that works for our town.
I understand that.
And for these districts.
So in our next meeting, then, I'd like to set up a schedule. And from that schedule, you know, we'll have clarity on what our path is and what our, you know, we'll work back. And, you know, as Chair, Vice Chair, we'll chat with Lee and make sure that we're resolved and we'll report back here. And I think that what we may have to do is have, you know, to pick off enough, you know, as we move forward, we have a meeting on, this brings us to the next item. Our next meeting, Lee, is Tuesday night, is that right?
Yes.
So. So we could potentially discuss one of these items on that night because that agenda item, that agenda is going to be a little short because one of the applicants, we're dealing with, I think, 100 West Street, and the applicant has effectively asked for continuance. So we're dealing with the decision for Sierra Naturals. I would actually like to see us, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't then, you know, take up the start of deliberations for 57 Highland, 557 Highland, for the Bullfinch Center. I would be, you know, I would be prepared to start. I don't think we're going to conclude deliberations. But I think that we could start on Tuesday night, identifying some of the issues and asking some questions of each other and to start to move that deliberation process forward. There's no reason to delay that.
Am I remembering correctly that we closed that meeting?
We did.
Except for requesting the Board of Health.
Yes.
Back to us.
Yes.
So, Lee, what's this?
Yes, and I don't, I don't have a response to the Board of Health yet. I mean, because we were anticipating doing Bullfinch, actually not at the next meeting, but a meeting, the meeting after the next meeting. So this window just opened up today.
Right, so having said that, that was only to deal with the question, I think, of the biohazards. You know, biohazard safety levels already existing in town. So if there's an opportunity to discuss other items, then I don't see a reason why we should wait if we've got time in the schedule.
Well, let me ask the question. Didn't we state at the last meeting that we wouldn't be discussing this until?
Yes.
Two weeks from now? So we've got all, all of these citizens in town who are concerned about 557 Highland, who are expecting that they don't have to show up on Tuesday. That they, that they don't have to show up until the meeting after that to hear our deliberations.
So they, I mean, they can, we can certainly send an email blast and.
Oh, that's not going to work. That's, that's not going to work.
And, well, they're pretty responsive already on Facebook, aren't they, buddy? So I think that we, there are ways in which we can.
Some, some people are, some people.
I'm already, hold on.
My, my concern.
That was rhetorical.
No, excuse me.
That was rhetorical.
My concern.
Please.
Stop making any particular item right now. My concern is the fact that this, having a meeting, at least in this room, doesn't work at all. The audio is so bad that any people attending it.
New Powers Hall next Tuesday?
Will get so distracted by the crackiness, the dropping out, that it will completely take away their, any people's rights and the democratic process of what they're hearing. So we have to find some way to make sure that the audio works.
I, I understand that valid point. Thank you for bringing that up, Artie, and we'll look into that. But just for a couple of points of clarity, in terms of the rights of, you know, there are, there are very minimal rights. They have the right to observe the proceeding, but they're not, but they're not participating in the proceeding. The hearing's been closed.
I talked about audio. I didn't talk about them speaking. I talked about them listening.
You talked, but you also talked about the.
And so.
You also talked about, Artie, you talked about the rights.
We can't account for as many people as we think may or may not be there.
I'm not going to.
Nothing funny about it at all.
I'm not going to talk about the rights.
I hung in there because I had, because we kept going through it. I wanted to drop, I wanted to drop out many times. It's not feeling well, but I hung in there. The audio, the audio many times is unrecognizable. So we need, I know, I know, the fact is, I know it's, it's not easy. It's not, it's not an easy solution.
Artie, Artie, I already acknowledged that it's a valid point. I've acknowledged that, okay? We, unless there's anything.
You acknowledged it, but you were telling, but then you started to say they don't have any rights. They have every right to.
Artie, thank you. I'm going to move on to Paul now. Paul, go ahead.
No, I was, I was just going to say, it's not a question of the rights of the citizenry. It's a question of there, if it's, if it's not made public in enough time for people to know that we are deliberating, and then we deliberate, and there are people who want to hear what the deliberations are so that they can go on Facebook the next day and comment on it or whatever it is.
Right.
And then, and then they find out after the fact that we had this meeting and had these deliberations, and, and they weren't able, they didn't know about it, so, so they didn't, or they've made plans for Tuesday night because, you know, they're.
That's valid. I understand that.
They, they're not anticipating that they have to be tuning in. That's not a good look. It's not good for the Planning Board.
I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting this in some surreptitious way.
No, no, no. I know that, I know that. But what I'm saying is, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea for us to be deliberating on 557 Highland this coming Tuesday night for those reasons. And for that reason, I'm out.
Well, maybe, maybe we could use it as an opportunity then, if we don't do that, to focus on, to kind of continue the conversation we started tonight and maybe make some decisions about what it is we want to prioritize for the town meeting in 2023. So whether it's going to be the accessory apartment by law, whether it's going to be, you know, something, you know, further on the three-car garage, if we could maybe come up with some ideas in terms of what we want to prioritize for next year, then the staff and I can begin to work on that.
So I think that's helpful. We'll, we'll look at that. I'm going to continue to have some of these other conversations that I mentioned as well. I encourage you to continue to have conversations with, you know, with all of our, you know, your peers and so on, and colleagues and friends. Because this list is not, this list is going to be a fluid list. We're going to continue to add to it, move it, change it. That's what it's there for. We may add some deadlines to some things as we go. Go ahead, Jeanie.
Yes, I made myself, as we went along, a little list of things I wanted to make sure I touched on before our meeting ends. And you meant, you have a bullet point on daycare procedures. And really, what we need to look at, it's apart from daycare, is our site plan review criteria. We need to review that criteria because that is going to be very important in this, in these multifamily housing. You can't require a special permit, but the guidelines and the law say you can apply site plan approval.
So I think that's reasonable.
So we, we just generally have to beef up our site plan approval.
I want to, I want to also add to that, that, you know, that's an example of an opportunity where we can, where that, where housing would become by right, that can we require that they, you know, have either solar, you know, solar energy or other.
The guidelines say that you cannot require anything special beyond what is generally required in your town for all kinds of development, commercial development, et cetera, as long as it's uniform. But if you're picking out multifamily housing for special treatment, you can't do that.
Right. Then, and then, but if we're modifying our site plan review criteria for all districts.
Right.
Then we could, for instance.
Include these environmental reforms.
Exactly. Then we could do that. Okay, good.
Yep.
So I, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask one quick question? I'm sorry, just to jump in here quickly.
Sure.
Given the experience that we had tonight with the technology, you know, we're scheduled to be in this room at the next meeting, which is next Tuesday. I don't know if I can get the town hall. If I can't get the town hall, do you want to, do you want to do a hybrid meeting next week? Or do you want to do a straight Zoom meeting? On the agenda, we just, we have the continuation of the 100 West Street project. We have the decision that we'll be voting on Sierra Natural. And I'm anticipating we'll be having a conversation again about the Planning Board's goals and what it wants to prioritize for the May 2023 meeting. But I need some direction about what you want to do.
We're not required.
Given the technology experience we had tonight.
We're not required to be hybrid. We are lawfully able to continue to be fully remote, correct?
Correct.
So.
Considering the topics on the agenda, it seems as though we may not be. Actually, was the, was the public expecting the Tuesday conversation on every, every building?
Yes, but he's asking for an extension. So what's going to happen is the hearing, you know, we'll revise the, we'll make sure that the zoning, or the meeting notice indicates that we have a request to continue it. That will be part of the agenda package so that people will be aware that it's not going to be a public hearing on it.
So there's no reason to expect a lot of people will want to come to that meeting?
No, and that's, that, no.
If you, you know, for anyone that's made comment about 100 West, are we able to send an email to them and to say that that's going to be continued? Can we post a notice on the, on our? I'm sure we have some kind of a system, like when you upload an agenda, people get an email alert, right?
Yes.
So we could send out a notification saying that that's been, that it will be continued.
Well, it's not continued until we vote to continue it. So we say, we say that the petitioner has requested that it be, that it be continued.
What I can do is when I send out the agenda via notify me, which hasn't happened yet, but we always do it, we can say the agenda can be found here.
Please note, exactly, exactly. That's great.
Let me just say, because in the interest of time, because I would like to actually get home. because I would like to actually get home, I don't particularly care whether it's fully Zoom or whether it's hybrid, and I am very comfortable leaving that decision to our Chair, Vice Chair, and staff.
Okay.
I, you know, I want to consult with, with staff and with the Needham Channel. If we can, you know, if we can perfect the technological challenges, I would presume to continue in here. If we can't, then I would, then I would.
You guys make the decision and just.
So we'll let you know.
Please make the call by tomorrow morning.
All right. Very good. So on that.
That's right, because you got to get it out on Thursday.
Artie, Artie, we, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, yeah.
We hope you feel better in your honor to let you, you know, you know, knock off for the night a little early. Do you want to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I second that motion.
So we have a motion by Artie, a second by Paul, to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none from my colleague. I'm going to say, Artie, get well soon. I'm going to ask you, Artie, do you need, do you want me to drop you off some water or orange juice or anything?
Oh, but I'm drinking, I'm drinking gallons per day.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
Orange juice and vodka, Paul's offering. I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We're adjourned. Thank you all.
Natasha Sparta abstained.